Good evening, everyone. Ah, that's better. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council chambers. If everybody can just rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Group, why don't you lead us off?
Yes, please join the pledge. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Chief Wayne.
How are you tonight, Chief?
Good, Mayor, thank you.
Good evening.
Hey, Chief.
Just a quick note, you probably saw my correspondence. The Most Precious Blood has stepped up to the plate and will be hosting the Florida Fallen Memorial Cross Tribute. They are working on a ceremony that will follow our Memorial Day Ceremony. Our starts at 9:00 a.m. promptly and there shortly thereafter. We're going to assist with them setting up their, the tribute on their site, but they're taking care of the entire ceremony, so more information to follow. And there's also a gentleman that's stepping forward to continue the golf tournament. He spent with the Stockwell family and it's going to be dedicated in Mark's name. A date to be determined, so get more information on that soon. And before I go to prayer, I'll tell you one other quick thing.
Go ahead.
After six years of running the farmers market, I have passed the gauntlet to the new, or the President, Don Jensen. Extremely appreciative to my wife and Jeff and Cheryl Chudnow and others as well, been instrumental helping me manage that market as a chairperson, but it's also nice to pass it off after six years.
You get the weekend off, actually.
Yeah, fine.
So now, is this the wind down to retirement? Is that what this is?
I'll keep that to myself.
How many days left?
Twenty-one months.
Twenty-one months. Now, just so everybody knows, and this is not a joke, he has an app on his phone counting it down. And Gail reminds us, his wife reminds us every time.
And my wife installed the app on her phone.
Well, Chief, you deserve it. You know, I, we joke about it all the time, but...
Well, I appreciate the City Council for your endorsement and support of the market and Mr. Cobb as well. He was instrumental as we were permitting and getting through that first year planning stage. It's very strong. We had forty vendors this past marketing.
Great.
You look busy.
Think twenty-one months. We've got plans for you after that. You're not going nowhere. There's so much TV.
I'd like a couple of weeks. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father Lord, we stand before you and ask for blessings on this wonderful community. We know that you're blessing this town in so many ways. Lord, we specifically ask for comfort for the families. We have several city families, city employees who are battling very serious illnesses, that you would comfort them, fellow employees and workers and so forth, and see them through this crisis. Lord, pray for anyone else as well in this community that are suffering from any type of tragedy and crisis, Lord. Pray for our veterans, our first responders, all our city employees who dedicate themselves, stay in and day out. Pray for our elected officials. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. This time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. It's approximately 6:35 p.m. We have all members of council present. Our first order of business tonight is recognition of the Oviedo High School girls varsity soccer team. They are the state champions once again, and I can say that this never gets old. So, Council, why don't you join me down?
It's like deja vu.
It is deja vu. Wayne, do you hear what I'm going to read? Well, as Councilman Britton said, it's like deja vu because we're having the girls' soccer team down once again. They are back-to-back state champions in soccer for FHSAA large school classification. So let's give them a round of applause. Now, this is impressive. In the 2016-17 season, the team's overall record was 22, oh, and one, one tie. They had seventeen shutouts in those twenty-three games. They scored one hundred and nineteen goals while allowing only seven. That's domination. And on the road to the Final Four in the state championship series, they outscored their opponents seventeen to one. So I think they deserve to win the state championship, and it's with my pleasure, distinct honor, that I introduce their coach, Scott Waisenin. Scott, come on up. It never gets old. I mean, four times in the last seven years. I mean, we just might as well have the ladies move in down here. But Scott, let me turn it over to you, introduce the ladies, the assistant coaches, and enjoy the moment.
Thank you, Mayor Pierce Santier. Can everybody hear me okay? Yeah, as Mayor Pierce Santier said, as I always tell our principal, Joe Travis, that that's the phrase I use, "It never gets old." So it's a testament to the girls' hard work and all that they do and their camaraderie and their teamwork and on and off the field, their desire to be a group, and it shows up on the field. So to make that all happen, I'll introduce my assistant coach, Bill Barker. We've been together twelve years. Bill, come on up. And I'll start with our senior class, and we'll bring those up. And girls, come on up. And you shake hands with the city council, seniors Brianna Wagner, Camille Comprithite, Erin Michelson, and Carly Mitchell. Our junior class, Kenneth Hildenbrand, Tessa Simmons, Reagan Massey, Sarah Preston, Sidney Brown, and Samantha Blandford. Our sophomore class, Avery Noack, Ally DeRose, and Haley Beavers. Haley had one goal and got the penalty kick that earned the other goal for us. She had a brilliant state final. So Haley got our third goal of the game, which was the icing on the cake for us. It was a really, really goal, very well timed. And then our freshman class, we have, starting out, we have how many of them? Six of them. Caitlin Armour, Ciara Brown, Mariah Beavers, Caitlin Zappé, Jade Barquette, and Emma Bruinsma. And Mayor Pierce Santier, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Coach. And ladies, what an incredible job, what an incredible journey. Now, out of the seniors, how many championships have the seniors won? Two. All righty. So where are the sophomores and freshmen, who each have one, I'm assuming? Well, sophomores may have...
Sophomores and juniors both have two.
Both have two. So ladies, are we going to have three in a row? We're going to have you back here this time next year because we're all, we're ready for it. And you know, we do have, amongst all the members here, we do have an alum of Oviedo High. Councilwoman, so she's exceptionally proud of you, and we all are. So just an absolutely great job. Congratulations. Parents, we're going to take a couple of pictures. We'll get them lined up, and we encourage everybody, come on up, mill around, get right in the front, take the pictures, because this is all about your girls. And ladies, absolutely, again, as I say, congratulations. It was fun to watch you this year. All right, we're all going to look up at the tree. Got a big smile. You weren't looking, so look now. All righty, ladies, congratulations. Same time next year, Coach? We'll just put it in the calendar now. Thank you, Bob.
You got a topic for count, huh?
All righty. Well, that's exciting stuff. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes for the March 6 regular session, March 16 special session, and our March 27 budget work session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Motion approved, all three.
Second. Motion second, multiple seconds. I'll let Barbara choose who got that one in. Is there any discussion?
I'm hoping we can delete the third of the four sentences related to the historic preservation discussion on the March 6 minutes. It just adds confusion that was cleared up later, but then people don't go look at that and get more confused.
Which, which one was it?
This is for the March 6, the main meeting. And it just says, all this stuff about landmarks and other stuff, so I think it's just unnecessary. So that's the easiest fix. Council consensus was to go with historical landmark and ask Dr. Correa to put together something, that sentence. You see what I'm talking about? I don't think it adds anything, but it's just a little confusing based on subsequent stuff.
Whatever everybody wants to do. I mean, if that's the minutes, that's the minutes.
Well, I don't think that we talked about it being historic landmarks. So rather than trying to change what the words say to reflect it in a way that I think is accurate, because when we talked about it at the follow-up meeting, I don't know that everybody thought that that's what, that what's written here is what we thought we were talking about either. So if we just delete it, then we're in the same place. Well, the landmark is a status quo. So we were talking about changing something from the status quo, and this is talking about establishing something new as if it weren't already what's in existence.
I thought we were talking about, instead of landmark, some sort of historic marker that someone could put up, not necessarily...
Yeah, yeah. So if we just delete that, you guys get what I'm saying? It's just, it's lingo that we can delete.
It's a pleasure, Council.
I have no preference.
That's not an answer, but that's okay.
I just have a question for Mr. Group. Mr. Group, can we, can we delete minutes that Barbara recorded as, you know, this is her take on the meeting? I mean, can we strike that?
You can change them before they're adopted, but once they're adopted, you have to amend them, so...
Right.
We've deleted, we've done this once before since I've come to council, and it was a similar thing, just changing...
Yeah, how many times have you done it in the last six years?
I know.
How many?
Probably zero until I got here.
Yeah. We're going, I vote to leave the minutes the way they are, personally.
Why don't we table it, then Barbara go back and clarify what it said, and we can vote on those next time?
Oh, seriously? Let's just knock that sentence out.
I would. I, I, I made the motion, so I'm going to agree with Councilman Britton. Barbara, if you can go see exactly what was in there, did we mention landmarks? Let's clarify it. I just, I'm uncomfortable striking something that we...
Well, it was clarified just in this same grouping of minutes, like the next meeting. That's why I think this is the easiest solution.
Yeah, but this is, this is the order of what happened.
Right.
I disagree.
All right. Well, that's okay. That's fine. You can disagree. I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, the motion to adopt the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye?
Yes, we're going to, we're going to have Barbara go back and listen to it on that particular meeting, just to clarify it and bring it back to us at the next meeting, just to make sure that's what it is. We can't strike minutes.
Okay, you made the motion, correct?
All right, so I'm going to make a motion, adopt the minutes, but on the March 6, we're going to bring that out to the April 17 meeting and have Barbara go back and listen to exactly what's said and just make sure that that is her, it's not verbatim, but it's what we were, the gist of what we were talking about.
Who's, who did you... Barbara, who's the seconder on that? The original, you gave it to Keith. Okay, Keith, do you agree?
I agree.
All righty, so our motion is second. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes as presented, except for March 6, will, Barbara will review and bring those back to us at April 17. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All righty. At this time, I'm going to open this up for public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where folks in the audience can address the council on any item that's not on the agenda this evening that already has public comment. I have one written request, and that one's from Deborah Shaver.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I did a public records request through Seminole County...
I'm sorry, just need, name and address of the record.
I'm sorry, you said it, so I didn't...
I didn't get it all, I'm sorry.
Chuliot, Florida, 1740 Brumley Road.
Thank you.
I did a public records request through Seminole County. I'd heard a lot of grumblings that the city was pursuing to purchase the Chuliot water plant. Per the public records request, which I have in hand, I found the following information as late as March 2017. I may not pronounce this gentleman's name correctly. Bill Sunstrom and the mayor have met many times at dinner at the county office with FU GA, who are the people who own the plant, and Commissioner Delary to talk about purchasing the plant. Mr. Sunstrom seems to be very aggressive about this pursuit, though FU GA has not put the plan up for sale or stated that they're even interested in selling it. But Mr. Sunstrom says he's really interested in purchasing the cup. Do you guys know what the cup is?
Consumptive use permit.
Okay. Consumptive use permit for how much water you use. As Oviedo buys golf courses and continues to develop at a very fast pace, I believe Oviedo needs to worry about their infrastructure, roads, traffic, and their own water plants before pursuing ours. As the state looks at cutting homestead exemption to owners, this cost could be over a million dollars to the city of Oviedo. Somewhere, Oviedo will have to raise their taxes for purchases and issue, and issues so you have, issues you have created by development. I'm sorry, I'm not a good public speaker. I apologize. I always get nervous in a minute. How many times I do this?
I'll get nervous.
Most of the city consists of people who do not pay a whole lot of attention to what goes on, except for what you hear on Facebook, traffic, overdevelopment, your own bad water issues. But when it starts hitting your taxpayers in the pocketbook, they will. Oviedo council over the past few years has used excuses, "This didn't happen on our watch. This council didn't make this decision." Well, this council has made many decisions that the citizens are dealing with today. So in fact, wanting, wanting to continue pursuing the Chuliot water plant, I would ask that you first be more transparent and what that will cost your citizens. And for the record, we in Chuliot, on Incorporated Seminole County, really don't want Oviedo to control our water plant. Thank you, gentlemen.
No problem. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening, our items number four through 13. Need a motion.
Is this the appropriate time to suggest pulling some or wait till? Okay.
Need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Bob, anything?
No, my questions were answered by staff.
Okay. Steve, anything?
No.
Deputy Mayor?
Good.
Councilman Britton? Councilwoman?
I think items number five and six both merit additional discussion.
Which item?
Five and six.
Five and six.
So the budget amendment...
Are these simple questions that you can ask staff and clarify?
I think one is going to be, but both of them are going to be policy questions, so no.
Motioner and seconder agree?
Yes.
Well, you're the second. Does the motioner agree?
Yes.
We're not going to spend a lot of time on these. We'll pull them off. It'll be item 13A and 13B. Number five will be A, number six will be B. All those in favor of the motion, pulling off items five and six as 13A and B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to go on to item number five, Resolution 3390-17. Mr. Cobb, can you give us a brief introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to approve the mid-year budget amendments that involve adjustments to revenues and expenditures within the different funds of the city's budget. Each year, we bring a mid-year budget amendment to the council. Per the city's financial policies, these amendments are basically to recognize the revenues that have been collected and to also recognize the impact of the revenues, if we have more revenues or less revenues, and to adjust the different expenditures accordingly. All of the, these mid-year budget amendments go across all funds within the city. We also make sure that any revenues adjustments are accompanied by an equal expenditure adjustment. If you have questions about specific funds, Mr. Boop is available to address any of those questions, but it's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution number 3390-17.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Council member, you have the floor.
My concern is with moving money from both the Water and Sewer Fund and the Stormwater Fund, just giving it from these special, they're not special revenue funds, these are enterprise funds, correct? Or just Mr. Boop, those are definitely enterprise funds, correct? So these, these are to be run as independent businesses. So for us to have excess, that's a cool thing to have, but we do have capital improvement plans that could be expedited where we to keep the funds where they were earned. So my, my hope is that this body will agree that these will be loans to the golf course acquisition project versus straight-up transfers that are never repaid, and there's no expectation of repayment.
Okay, great. Any questions from anybody else?
Isn't that the way it's supposed to work?
Mr. Cobb?
Actually, Councilman, it can work either way. There are ways that you can do it to, to do a inter-fund loan. You can do it that way, and there's also ways that you can do it as just a transfer. So it can happen either way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we, if we do these as loans, we're just encumbering the golf course more than it already has been encumbered. I, I think that this, these should just be inter-fund transfers to get the, the golf course going as it, as it sits today.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, anything?
Councilman Pollak just took the exact words out of him. I mean, look, we got to get this going. This is the way it is. We all going to, you know, this is going to be storm water anyway, storm water to, to fund the debt, so I don't really have a problem with it. We got, we got, we got to get this going. There's, there's no turning back from this now, so, I mean, we got to move on.
All righty. Hearing all the questions, any other discussion?
Well, we, you know, talking about a specific from, but from a policy standpoint, as long as it's legal and it provides us that flexibility, I think that's the question we want to answer for Councilwoman Slaty. Correct?
Mr. Group?
Yes, I've discussed this with Mr. George Smith over the weekend and today, as recently as today. Research myself to the extent that I could ask the right questions of Mr. Smith, talk with Mr. Boop, talk with Mr. Cobb. Make a long story short, when revenues, and Mr. Boop can give the details if, if I say it wrongly, but when revenues come in to the utilities, to the utilities, you're controlled by your bond covenants. Your bond covenants require that the revenues go into two funds, right? Period, if I got that right, two funds? And then there's, once those funds have been, those, the funds have been deposited and those funds have been paid, and the, and the payments on the bonds, et cetera, have been paid, there's additional revenues left, okay? Those revenues are the revenues that you're talking about. Those funds are the funds you're talking about. And Mr. Smith verified today that what your covenants say is that at that time, those funds can be used for any lawful purpose, any lawful purpose. The funding of the golf course is a lawful purpose, so the funds are free to be used that way. You could either encumber them by a note, inter-fund note, or you can just transfer the funds from one fund to another without that encumbrance. And if Mr. Group, have I said anything wrong? Okay, that's, that's the nature of the beast.
Okay, so the question is whether we want to maintain that flexibility or, or not.
I think the question is more whether we're going to just funnel an unlimited amount with no expectation of repayment. Part of this is for the purchase price, but the additional needed above the purchase price is $435,000.
Councilmember? Councilman Britton, you have the floor still.
The question was on policy, not, and the specific thing we, is on paperwork and vote on that, but the policy, I think, is to allow us that flexibility as long as, in my mind, it's legal and we have that. I don't see any reason why we would want to encumber ourselves with, by changing that.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Councilmember?
I don't agree with just giving money with no expectation of repayment when we could, we could write off the, there could be provisions within the loan that says if the golf course is unable to be, to repay it, you know, there, there's a way to dispose of that. But to have no expectation of performance standards and give it this extra loosey-goosey, you know, give them $840,000 to pull this off. And it seems to me that we must be grossly overcharging our water and our sewer customers and our, our storm water must have too much money too if we have that much excess that we can give with no expectation of repayment.
Well, I don't think that's what they're saying.
We have that much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can, can Mr. Boop come up, please?
Sure. All righty, guys, I'll be honest, this has gone on ten minutes too long already, so I'm getting ready to call the question.
Okay. Just real quick. Other cities take their enterprise funds, the access from their enterprise funds, and they're more of a transfer to the city or back to the, the general fund, correct?
That is correct.
So, so this is not something that's, you know, uncommon to do. We, a lot of cities do this.
That is correct.
Okay.
And the point that, no, Gary, I'm fine. The point that I was going to make is that... The point that I was going to make is that, you know, this purchase is a policy issue. You know, we can't keep trying to just drive it down a lane in order to satisfy curiosities. You know, the policy issue of this body a year ago to purchase this land was to keep it from development, period. So, if staff has gotten creative in getting us there, that's what we told them to do. So, you know, at this point in time, this is something the residents wanted. The residents wanted this land preserved. They did not want it to be developed. We wouldn't have found a way to make this happen, and we would have been in here having a development fight with the owners. We would have had busloads of people down here with pitchforks and torches, upset over the fact that we didn't do everything that we could humanly possible to stop that from happening. And we were able to do it. Twenty, thirty years from now, you know, I know a few hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, eight hundred thousand, a lot of money, but thirty, forty years from now, when that is still either a golf course or parkland and you have three hundred acres, eight hundred acres actually total, seven something that the city owns currently as parkland, never mind the twenty-two hundred acres of conservation lands that we have, we'll have a nice green space here in the city, so that's the way I look at it. Thank you, Jerry. Any other questions? Hearing none?
Would you guys entertain doing four sixty-five as a straight gift to cover the additional investment of capital to get the land and then do the four thirty-five as a loan? Which would be the startup capital for the running of the golf course.
Why are we negotiating with ourselves?
Right. I'm calling the question. All in favor of the?
We didn't do a motion.
We didn't do a motion yet? All right. Mr. Pollak?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution number thirty-three ninety dash one seven.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thirteen B is item six. Thirty-three ninety-one dash seventeen, right-of-way vacate for Park Place Apartments. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to vacate and abandon a portion of the Michael Burdo Way, public right-of-way, to accommodate a commercial development. The proposed right-of-way is approximately two hundred and twenty square feet on the south side of Michael Burdo Way. In the development of the Marlowe's Restaurant, we encountered a situation where the entrance feature, primarily the steps into the restaurant, were encroaching onto the public right-of-way. The property is?
By the public right-of-way, are you talking about the road or the sidewalk?
Basically into the sidewalk, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And the property is constrained, and staff's recommendations to relocate the building was messing up the way that the parking was configured, as well as messing up the pedestrian ways. The staff's primary concern was liability. Having steps within public right-of-way, that posed just too much of a liability risk. We worked with the developer. We also spoke with the users, Mr. Gruet, Mr. Wyatt, and we came up with a solution that the city would be in everyone's best interest for the city to vacate that two hundred and twenty square feet of right-of-way. It's recommended that the city council adopt Resolution number thirty-three ninety-one dash seventeen.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Hmm?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution thirty-three ninety-one dash one seven.
Second.
A motion second. Any discussion? Councilman, you made the motion.
My concern is that we --
Excuse me?
Oh, that council, okay.
Councilman who made the motion.
All right. I meant the one who pulled it from the consent agenda.
I know that there's some discussion over this on the -- basically, there were some impact fee credits that were given, and then they were given for this piece of property, and then now we're vacating it, so there's some balance there. But after discussions with staff, it's a very minimal amount of money, and to me, it doesn't seem like it's worth pursuing that at this point, especially on, you know, a project so large.
Okay. Seconder? Deputy Mayor?
I agree. It's very, very minimal, and, you know, along the way, I'm sure there were things that were done that developer just did and took care of. I mean, there's lots of things. When it's really large, then I would say, yes, we've got to talk about it. But this is so, so small, it's just, it's not even, it's not even worth it. I mean, it's just, it's not even, we've got to get that place built.
Councilman Britton, anything?
No issues.
Councilmember? Floor is yours.
We paid three hundred thousand dollars an acre roughly for the land under this right-of-way. So, I do have a problem with vacating it. I went out there and looked at the road and was kind of surprised to see that it is a two-lane road that we paid for, and no other jurisdiction does anybody pay anywhere close to three hundred thousand per acre for land under a road that was required for a developer to access his own project. Only in Oviedo do we do that, and then share the cost of construction fifty-fifty. So, I'd really like to revisit the impact fee credits. I think it would be appropriate as a steward of public funds.
Okay. Mr. Cobb? Wasn't there a study done on the necessity for this road because the city wanted it to be a public right-of-way instead of the private driveways that Oviedo on the Park was originally designed to have?
There was a traffic impact study that was done to justify the awarding of impacted credits. The purpose of the study was to demonstrate that the roadways that were being dedicated to the city would help with the capacity on Mitchellhamick Road, Oviedo Boulevard, and State Route four thirty-four. The transportation engineers that prepared this study were able to demonstrate that these roadways will actually take traffic off of those roads and will help with the capacity of those roadways. And they, our traffic engineers reviewed it and signed off on it. And so, the credits that were issued, we issued credits for the dedication of the right-of-way, which was eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, based on an appraisal. And then we issued credits based on, I believe it was forty-eight or forty-nine percent of the construction cost.
Correct. And in those construction costs, as with most of Oviedo on the Park, rather than building the roadway to the minimum standards, the city has been requiring upgrades to the roadways, correct?
Yes, sir. It was that they would be paying, they would be building more than just a normal street. They would be building streets on the level of rest of Oviedo on the Park.
Right. Streetscaping, park benches, planter boxes, brick pavers on the sides of the roads where the parking goes.
Yes, sir.
Restaurant row is all bricks, if I remember. Because I remember when the study was done, and if I remember the study correctly, the justification was that it was giving Oviedo on the Park additional outlets, which was keeping the traffic off of the Clara Lee Evans intersection and more evenly dispersing it, or something to that effect.
That's yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. And that was already approved by council, correct?
Yes, sir.
Impact fee credit agreement that Pacland Development has is an agreement that's signed, sealed, and delivered already?
Yes, sir. It's in effect. It's been executed by both Pac and the city.
Okay.
House has an amendment.
And, you know, again, I can understand your concern coming in late at the game, but ten years' worth of planning to get Oviedo on the Park to where it is, yes, the city has made concessions in a public-private partnership, which Oviedo on the Park is. It's a unique development to the city in comparisons to the other, but nothing's been done that hasn't passed muster or has gone past our city attorneys, so, you know, if it's two hundred and twenty square feet of impact fee credit that you're asking that gets returned to us. Has anyone ever done a calculation on that, Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir, I did.
What's the value of that?
The value of it is one thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty cents.
Is that just for the three hundred thousand per acre? Is that everything included?
That's based on eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars for two point nine nine acres, which comes out to six dollars and eighty-nine cents per square foot. I converted the acres to square feet, obviously. And for two hundred and twenty square feet, it's one thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents.
What's the fifty-fifty on the construction cost? So, I would be happy, as a token gesture, to accept something in that range to buy the city's right-of-way.
Mr. Cobb, does the agreement say anything about the developer having to buy these things back? I mean, obviously, we don't have to give it to them. I'm just curious how the agreement's written.
I think it's silent.
It just left the right-of-way vacation process to what it normatively is. So, there was no anticipation of vacation or right-of-way, so it wasn't unexpected because whenever you have a development, you know how things have and flow and change, but it wasn't spelled out. It just left it to the normal process, which this is.
I mean, I seem to remember us getting parking spaces, giving up parking spaces, changing this, changing that. I mean, it all seems to wash out at the end. I mean...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Actually, I think Councilman Britton wants to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Lonny, how much do you charge us an hour?
Excuse me? You know, I don't even know, quite frankly.
Let me ask you this, the time you would spend on writing up a contract for sale, would it pretty much balance out that thousand dollars?
Well, to go to your point, and I'm not arguing this matter at all, but to process money costs money in government. So, you process a hundred, you know, you process a hundred-dollar check, it might cost you three hundred dollars to process it in government. And, you know, and so, that's...
I think we're just talking, you know, it's just a practical matter. I agree with Megan's idea, but I, yeah, I think it's just practicality that to go through that formality would just be a waste of time and money. It's so small.
Well, maybe he could make it up for us in another way by doing something nice in that amount.
Councilmember? Excuse me. You have to ask to be recognized. Please.
Mr. Mayor, I will work on that.
Councilman Pollak asked to be recognized next. Councilman Pollak?
All I wanted to say was, we're talking about fifteen hundred dollars for, and we've got a restaurant that everybody is excited to see come here, and we're...
And more coming.
Exactly. And we're over here arguing about fifteen hundred dollars. I just find it silly.
Councilmember, you now have the floor. And then I'll get to you, Deputy Mayor.
I'm good. I got my comments in earlier.
All right. Deputy Mayor?
No, I just want to say, you know, every time something like this comes up, you know, Tom, I just got to say, look, this has not been an easy process, Oviedo on the Park. It has been peaks and valleys and everything, and I am quite happy the way you guys have done it. And, you know, I tip my hand to you. This has been a dream of people. And by the way, I say this all the time, let's not forget, the citizens voted for this project pretty overwhelmingly. So, people left us at the altar, kind of like the hospital. We have a guy here who goes through, is out there, I see him all the time, and, you know, if this was fifteen thousand dollars, Tom, I think you would agree, we'd have to talk about it. But it's so ridiculously small, it just doesn't, it doesn't pay. But I just want to tell you, this is from me, and I'm sure you're doing a great job out there. Get it done, and we'll all go enjoy it. Megan, to your point, I see exactly where you're going, but when it's that small, that's the reason. I mean, it's just, by the time we fixed it, it would cost us more to fix it, you know? So, sometimes you just got to throw. But I don't disagree with your premise, you know? But just get us done, Tom. Get that place built. People need more place to eat. We're waiting on you.
All righty. I have a motion on the table to adopt. I'll go up and down the dais one last time. Anything else?
Good.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Got to say nay on principle.
No problem. All righty, moving on. We have no public hearings. We have no first reading of ordinances. We do have a resolution, however, it's Resolution number thirty-four oh two dash seventeen. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve a site development order and a architectural design order for Lot Three of Oviedo on the Park, and it involves a restaurant and retail development. The proposed development is located on the west side of City Walk Lane and the north side of Mitchellhamick Road, east of the Chipotle is where it's located. The total area is zero point nine nine acres. The property is, has a future land use designation of downtown mixed-use district and a zoning district of mixed-use district downtown Village Core. The applicant proposes to develop the property with a five thousand three hundred and twenty square-foot restaurant with a patio and a two thousand four hundred and thirty square-foot retail building. As we just now discussed, the applicant did request a right-of-way vacation that was necessary to facilitate the development of the property as proposed. The applicant has satisfied all concurrence requirements. There are some deviations that are required, both in the site development order as well as in the architectural design order. The site plan deviations mostly involve buffer requirements as well as street tree requirements. There are also some minor deviations to some of the parking lot islands as well. On the architectural side, there are a number of deviations, not a lot, not a lot of deviations, but there are a few deviations that deal with the roof design as well as the fenestration of the buildings. The, there's also a deviation on the number of mitigative techniques. Our architectural standards, when you have deviations, do require different types of mitigative techniques. The applicant is proposing three. One of them is two murals to be on the restaurant building, both on the south and east elevations. There's also a covered patio on the corner of Michael Burdo Way and City Walk Lane. And there is a four-foot-wide landscape area along the west elevation facades of both buildings with brick pavers, stairs, a paved stairs element, decorative plot plants in the northwest corner of the restaurant building. The staff reviewed the architectural design per the architectural standards, found that they do meet the intent of the standards, and therefore, it is recommended that the city council adopt Resolution number thirty-four oh two dash seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I have no written request to speak on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address city council? Hearing none, I'll close it. I skipped over the applicant. Tom, did you have anything to add? Usually, you let Mr. Cobb do most of the speaking. If you do, come on up.
Tom Cavanaugh, Pacland Development, Winter Park, Florida. I would only add one thing is, I'm thinking tomorrow I'm going to be able to announce the second major tenant that's out there, and they're going to require some minor changes to the facade. The way the two four hundred square-foot retail building is set up is it has two distinct entries. It's really set up for two retailers, and I've got a form of a restaurant that's going to take the remaining. So, that means I've got to eliminate a door, I've got to move some windows around for fire code issues. So, by the strictest interpretation, if I changed anything, I have to come back here. I would just like your permission to pick a number, twenty percent, that if it doesn't deviate twenty percent more than what's approved tonight, let staff handle it. I'm not going to change the box. I'm not changing the height. I'm not changing the construction materials. This is really just limited to, like, safety issues, fire issues, windows, doors, and some signage issues that'll be out there. Obviously, I have to bring back and let staff approve signs, but I really would not like to come back here for eliminating a door, for example.
Okay.
That will be my request. Thank you.
No problem. All righty, I'll open up the public comment portion again since I went out of order, and I do apologize. Anybody in the audience? Seeing, hearing none, I'll close the public comment portion, and I'll entertain a motion from council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution thirty-four oh two dash seventeen, and that would also, just for the issues that Mr. Cavanaugh placed just for this, so he doesn't have his time constraints to let staff handle that, as long as it doesn't get more than twenty percent. I agree.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor?
Yeah, I mean, these are just, you know, just changes that come along. I mean, they come along with every, every building he builds out there. Nothing is perfect until you start building it, and I just want to clarify that the staff... And I just want to clarify that the staff will only be for this issue, Tom. Is that fair enough? Because we still have to, as the land use administrators, look at it. But I know you're under time constraints, so I'm good. I mean, go.
Councilmember Pollock?
I'm ready to go to a new restaurant.
All right. Councilmember Slater?
On the sixty-eight parking spaces that are needed, is that all onsite parking, or is any parking needed for the restaurant utilizing the on-street parking? I'm not sure if this is a question for Dr. Correa, perhaps, or the applicant.
The on-street parking is public parking, and I believe your code allows us to take into consideration fifty percent of the abutting property to be counted in our accounts. Even without that, from a code standpoint, I'm fine, meeting the internal parking requirements. There's a whole other conversation about meeting the requirements of the tenants, but I think that's probably beyond the scope here. But as far as meeting the code, I can do that onsite. As far as the public parking and the right-of-way, it is just what it is. It's public parking.
Okay, so even if the on-street parking did not exist, you would meet code? That's correct. Okay, I'm getting an offer from staff. Excellent, thank you.
The demands of the tenant, no. The code, yes.
Okay.
So you could come down there, decide you want to park in front of the restaurant, and go use the park. I can't control it.
Okay, just making sure. And I did have another question on the fifty percent deviation on the north side landscaping buffer. Since we did pay three hundred thousand dollars per acre for the land immediately adjacent to that buffer, I want a ten-foot buffer there so I can go smell the flowers, or sit on the side of the road, or you do whatever lovely things people do in these buffers or near these buffers. The buffer was from ten feet down to about half that, four point nine nine feet. It seems like it would be nicer to put the cars, all the parking, over by Mitchell Hammock where the forty-five mile per hour people are going already, and keep the nice stuff where the people are walking.
Some of me agrees with you, but I can't dictate the geometry of the site. I only have so many square feet, and like, the parking lot is twenty feet. So basically, to get the ten feet, I got to eliminate that whole row of parking, and that doesn't give me the parking count that I need to even meet code. So unfortunately, parking is at a premium on this particular site, really for the demands of the restaurant. Now, the four feet...
Could it be compact car parking? Would that be a solution that would get us to the correct buffer on that one?
I don't believe you have requirements in your codes for compact parking. It would be nice.
Would that be a compromise solution to get...
Compact parking is more the width, from what I understand, from the law of it. You don't allow overhangs, so that exaggerates the problem a little bit. But there are a couple areas that it goes from basically ten to five, but we've just made it all plant material. So it's not going to be any grass. Say you've got a ten-foot buffer, fifty percent will be grass, and say fifty percent would be plant material. We've just literally made it all plant material and put the trees in. I don't believe we're asking for a deviation in the number of trees there. We're just asking for a deviation in the width.
Okay.
Trust me, I'm a big believer in squeezing in as many trees as I can. There's a couple managers out there that we're going to relocate and put them on city property right now, because I just don't want to see them damaged, and I'll come back and put new trees in its place at the appropriate time.
Now, on the tree front, there's mention of having no trees at all in the median of Mitchell Hammock. I did talk with Duke Power today, and they're okay with trees being in there. So I'm not sure if it's a...
Well, I don't think it's no trees. I think we ask for deviation on, is it the median side of trees, understoryed trees? The problem you have with your code, and I don't want to get into your code, I'll give you a short version of it, you require so much that, let's say you require two trees thirty feet on some of them.
And there's just not enough room for them to grow up to be big trees. I agree, yeah.
They kill everything that's underneath it, and they also kill... A living example is the good out of Panera. Look at their understoryed trees. They're already starting to thin out, they're already starting to die, the branches are growing into each other. Two years from now, those oak trees are going to thin out. They're not going to have the head, they're not going to look the way they're designed to look. Landscape architects lose their mind, goes, I can't plant these trees, it's plus. I say, city code, you've got to put them in there. So we're asking for a deviation of some of the understoryed, which opens up the view corridors, which also makes the landscaping more healthy.
Well, this is number five in the memo, and it's talking about the street tree requirements with a deviation of a hundred percent.
I believe it's...
Are we talking about the same thing, the street trees?
Understory.
Okay, because it's just talking about street trees, two hundred twelve feet worth of these. So it's number five under the memo, and it just mentions that there's this power, and there is, but it's kind of empty under there, and I think it'd be nice to plant something, and if there's a requirement to do it, there's no need to have a hundred percent deviation for it.
Council, there's two things to look at, and just give you the short version. When you think of power, you might as well go overhead. Truth of the matter is, there's three lines running through there that are two and a half feet of the ground. So no matter what happens, I have to dance around those lines that are in the ground. It's not as easy as, okay, showing a picture on a tree that looks like that tree right there, I am still going to have to reason that I was getting around those power lines that are in the ground.
Okay, that I was not aware of. That explains. And one other, possibly?
Mayor?
Yep, yeah.
Could I help? First thing, parking spaces. In the new downtown, the minimum requires nine by eighteen, which is traditionally, that's the compact size. All the spaces within this parking lot are nine feet wide by eighteen feet deep. So he's already providing a compact size space to answer that question. On the street trees, there's, yes, there are a couple of deviations. One deviation on Mitchell Hammock Road, there's a requirement for five street trees along the frontage of Mitchell Hammock Road, not inside the median, but on the north side of Mitchell Hammock Road. There's a deviation to reduce that from five to four. So there'll be four large trees.
Yeah, I didn't have any problem with any of that.
Now, yes, there also is a street tree requirement for seven small or medium trees, which usually fall inside of or in between the large trees. And yes, there is a deviation to not be required to plant all seven of those trees, so that you would still have the four large trees, you just wouldn't have the seven medium trees, is what you wouldn't have. So those are the two deviations along Mitchell Hammock Road. There's also another one on City Walk Lane, but the space constraints on City Walk Lane, we just had to do it, so with those.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Anything else, Councilmember?
I'm going to pull Councilman Hank in here, and that is that, well, kind of. People voted for not a lot of stucco, and there's a request to have a lot of stucco because it sounds like it's going to be kind of hidden behind a big sign. I did drive by there on the way here to see where this big entry sign's going to be. How tall is it going to be? Because the renderings, there's a lot of stucco on that side of the building.
I fell on the, the south face of the twenty-four hundred square foot building.
The one, yes, the south facing of that one.
I'd have to look at a rendering.
Better rendering.
Sure, but to answer one of your questions, is that wall out there is four to five feet tall. It has a railing on top of it, and there's some columns that will go as high as nine to ten feet tall. And there's also some trees that are in back of the wall and in front of the wall. So from a line of sight, I'm not thinking that it's a big deal having all that stucco up there. I mean, I'll certainly take a look, and I know there's some brick down on the bottom of it, but I don't...
You got to go look at it?
I've got it right here. If the whole thing is, it's just kind of cheaper, and it'd be nice to not have to do it, I'm inclined to say, well, you don't have to not do that.
I do?
Yeah. I mean, that's not the most, it takes a second to load here. Let me see if I can find which one it was. Yeah.
Marlowe's looks like a nice building.
Yeah, the Marlowe's part looks nice, and that's got a lot of architectural bling going on.
You go for a couple columns.
Yeah, but that's just a whole lot of stucco, and it was like fifty percent deviation. If you could just add some more brick, add something else. Oh, yeah, I think you probably, you may have consensus to add nothing, but I'm still stuck on three hundred thousand per acre for road.
You got to get over that. That was done...
That was done two years ago, almost, eighteen months.
You got to start looking forward, not looking backwards. Can't undo the past.
True that, but we do have these guidelines that we just put in place, so for our very first project to have a deviation of this amount on the stucco, I'm not sure why we'd do that right away.
Can you add more to it and get rid of some of the stucco, Tom?
Who knows? I can take a look at it, but I can't change the documents now. That would mean I have to go back to the restaurant tenant that I'm talking to right now, I have to go back to Marlowe's, and everybody else.
You got to go back anyway, because you're probably going to get a new tenant tomorrow and have to change windows and doors.
Well, they've already seen all the elevations and everything that I've submitted to them so far.
You upgrade them.
We're down to negotiating the last thing of the lease, so...
This building looks so good. I really don't even get this whole thing. I mean, there's not, we can't, you know, we cannot stop this progress. We just can't. I mean, the building looks fine, and if you got to, what you just described that you would have to do, this restaurant you're going to tell us about tomorrow, he's going to cancel and go to Alphamont or something. You know, we got to get this place done.
Yeah, what he might do is go to Stone Hill. Are we going to do all the same niceness there if they come and ask for a fifty percent deviation?
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
I think we really need to set a policy of having the same rules for everybody. Part of the reason to adopt the architectural standards is so we would have a guideline by which to treat people similarly.
We are the land use administrator for Oviedo on the Park. We're not the land use administrator for Stone Hill. Am I correct, Mr. Cobb?
That is correct.
I mean, so, you know, staff's going to take a look at that first, and I will tell you, you can feel confident. When they say it's okay and they bring it to us, it's usually right on the money, so...
And anytime that Stone Hill wants to donate or develop a large park inside of their plaza rather than a huge parking lot in the back by the neighbors and partner with the city on doing things like that, then those developers might have different things that we can do for them. But that's not the case here. So, you know, if Mr. Axel doesn't like how we're treating Stone Hill, even though they haven't even submitted, we haven't even done anything with it, that's Mr. Axel's problem. Don't make it ours.
I don't mind taking a look at it. If you want to throw a ten percent where I can add, I think you're talking about siding, is the only thing that I'm probably going to add. As long as I don't have to come back here and I can do it in the field, and I can go get the permission, with the architect get involved, and I could just do it in the field, we're fine. So if you want to, you know, the twenty-five percent on doors and windows, if you want to throw in, you know... Twenty percent. I'm sorry, twenty percent.
Yeah, twenty percent on doors and windows, and smaller on the stucco.
If you want to throw in, you know, the staff, twenty percent for the addition of some additional siding on the building, I'll take a look at it. Okay? There's a lot that goes into play there with window openings and view quarters and where the trees are located, where the columns are located. I just can't give you that answer right now. You can add it to it because you made the motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Because you made the motion.
Mr. Mayor? All right, so I'm going to amend the motion on Resolution Thirty-four oh-two to adopt, but to give Mr. Cavanaugh flexibility of ten percent to kind of make that stucco side look a little bit nicer to address...
Twenty percent.
Do you need ten, all right, twenty. Twenty percent to address Councilwoman Slater's concerns. Can you dress it up, Tom, and then you don't have to come back here a little bit?
If I put siding on it, it has to go vertical, it's got to go top to bottom, so I just have to get the architect involved, take a look at it, so yes.
Not so it's one big stucco thing, which fits with us anyway.
If you leave it at twenty percent, the most I could do is change twenty percent of that facade.
Yeah, without calling everybody else in camp, you're dressing it up a little bit. All right, there's the motion.
I agree. I agree.
Councilwoman?
I think I agree, too.
Okay, good.
It'd take me about thirty seconds to fully wrap my brain around it.
You agree?
I agree. Megan agrees, I agree.
Is there any possible way, because a Prius is not eighteen feet long. How many cars, could we violate the code to make any of those five feet shorter?
Councilmember, we're done.
Ah.
The rest of the members are done.
It can't be done. Okay, all right.
You got to win. You're good.
We're done. I'm calling the question, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's an amended motion on the table. The motion includes that we're adopting the resolution in front of us. We're also granting up to twenty percent deviation for health, safety, and fire issues, doors, windows on the smaller building. We're also granting twenty percent deviation on additional siding to be added to the building to eliminate some of the stucco. Is that the motion?
Yes, sir.
Bob, you read the second?
Yes, I agree.
All righty. That's the motion on the table. All in favor of the motion? You good, Councilman?
I'm good.
All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
I got to vote for something. Yay!
You voted for everything.
I got to vote in the affirmative.
You would actually find that it's much more fun to vote in the affirmative rather than always trying to be the man.
I agree, yeah.
But that comes with time, I guess. We have no discussion items. Mr. Cobb, you're up.
No report, Mayor.
That's the perfect kind of report. Councilmember Slater, are you going to follow our city manager's lead?
Sadly, or not sadly, thrillingly, no. So I want to follow up on the hundred and ten thousand dollar contractor, Retail Strategies. They have been at this for almost nine months now, so the pro rata amount that they have earned, and I assume we've paid them, is thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. In exchange for this, I'm curious, what have we received in return for our town?
Well, this is a report, not a discussion item.
Okay. Well, I've been told by the city attorney that this is it, so the discussion is, can we get more aggressive with asking these people what they're doing for us?
This is at the budget meeting? I got you. This was at the budget meeting, Mr. Cobb, you were not there, Mr. Boop was there, and I actually asked the same question. So Jerry's going to give us a report, and he's putting it together, just to let us know what's going on at Retail Strategies. I actually brought that up. Thank you for following up with that. So can you send us how it's going with them?
We've already reached out to Retail Strategies. They are preparing a progress report for us, and we'll be, as soon as we receive it, we'll distribute out to Council. So we are, we've already got it.
And also wanted to follow up officially from the dais, the, I have behind the scenes, let those guys on the scooters know that it's being worked on. Do we have an ETA on that yet?
All of them. And...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. What was the question?
Scooter, ETA on scooters.
What scooters?
Oh, the scooter guys that came, who wanted to have a scooter day at the skate park.
Oh.
Yeah, because if you're twelve...
Not those on scooters, those are...
If you're twelve or thirteen, yeah, razors.
The razors.
What are those things called?
Razors.
But the folder said scooter.
Okay. I'm confused. I'm thinking scooters, I'm thinking best for razors. Why do I leave here with a headache now? I swear, six years it was...
Dehydration.
I used to go home, I didn't need a beer, now I do.
Yeah, listen, you sit back, I got you.
God, that's fine.
Deputy Mayor's taking over.
Yeah, I'm taking over. Drew?
I mean, can we serve alcohol here now?
We can at Twin Rivers Golf Course, right? Can we go there after the council meetings?
That's what we're gonna do.
All right, Drew, talk about the razors, because we're gonna move along.
Staff has been doing research, and we're going to allow the scooters, the final piece of pie, so to speak, is we're trying to figure out how we're gonna do, if we're gonna allow it with other, you know, the skaters, or if we're gonna do their own sessions. We got a little concerned with doing it with other, because we've got, with the scooters, you've got the areas of, you know, that are some drops, and since the scooters are more into just the street course itself, we gotta make sure it's safe. So staff is still checking a few things, but we're probably gonna pull the trigger in the next 30 days or so.
All right, you'll let us know.
Working on those kids that came up and talked to us?
Yeah, well, Antonio and Paul both done, tagged, and they discussed stuff with them and stuff, yeah.
Because like a week is forever if you're a kid, so I'll make sure that before, before the end of the school year, they can scooter.
We just need to make sure, we just, biggest thing is liability risk, we just wanna make sure that we go into this with a good plan, so that we don't put anyone at harm's sake.
So like the first meeting in May, you'll let us know what's going on, you're working on it. All right, Megan, you're up.
While he's up here, just real quick, the middle row...
This is the council member's report.
No, don't like that. You know I'm into this, no, I'm into this, this discussion.
Hang on, hang on one second. Councilwoman, if you finish your report.
Okay, but I'm cool with it, I like this organic thing.
You gotta keep some decorum here.
All right, well, I think most of you guys know I'm heading to Tallahassee tomorrow and the next day with the Chamber of Commerce, just wanted to let you know, and I'll try to represent well.
Okay, that's awesome. Tell them we need a texting law, and talk to Chief Coleman when you're done.
All right, we'll do.
We're working on it. There's companion bills now, we need that. Good.
And last thing, just wanted to throw out there an idea. We have a transportation concurrency exception area. It is over 700 acres large, and when we were talking about Mr. Kavanaugh's project, it was mentioned that concurrency was met. Well, that was met because it's a transportation concurrency exception area. So where all of our traffic issues are, that's where we have this exception area. So I'm not sure if I'm in favor of eliminating it or not. I thought I'd throw out there to all you guys and see if there's any consensus to revisit that.
Anybody?
And I have a comp plan that I'm propping myself up with, if you guys wanna know where it is or anything.
All right, well, let's not go there.
Okay.
Anybody wanna be on with this at all? Councilman?
I, I don't have any information to go on to make a decision.
All right, so here's my recommendation. Go sit with Brian and see if Brian thinks it's a good idea, and bring it back to us to our next meeting. You good?
Okay, well, if I could explain to anybody who maybe watch from home, what this is is a place where you don't have to have roads that have enough space for the additional development, so that we've got a spot, 700 acres of Oviedo where you don't have to have enough roads. So that's, that's what I thought, maybe we could...
Do you know that the transportation concurrency exception district was put into place soon after the constraints were put into place?
Yes.
Okay, so...
So it all goes together.
No, 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 you just hang on a second. So let's get the whole story out here, because the councilwoman likes to give half a story.
I tried, here you go.
Just give it back, you know. The transportation concurrency exception district was something that was put in place after the constraints were put in place, because the constraints were put in place by councils in the past who wanted to stop development. But then they realized that by putting the constraints in place, that they were, they would have been stopping all of the development that they wanted to happen. So then they put in transportation concurrency exception areas, and then that got expanded a little bit back in 2000, I think it was? Late 1990s?
In 2010 is when it was last done.
So, I mean...
So like it would stop development, possibly, so I don't, that's why I don't know that I love it. So I'm not purposefully telling half the story is, yeah, I get that, yeah.
I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that this is something from, you know, again, years ago. And, you know, stopping development always sounds, sounds nice and great, but let's talk reality here. You stop it in a little oasis like ourselves, and it's happening all around us, which is what occurred. Lowe's, Home Depot, Target, all of that commercial development is not in our city because of policies like that, but we get all the impact of all that development, and we don't collect one dime of tax revenue. So, you know, it's, it's a bigger issue than sitting here and saying, "Well, we have, we have a transportation concurrency exception area, and that's what's creating all our traffic problems."
Well, no, that's not what's creating, that's what's keeping development happening in spite of the traffic policies that happened 30 years ago.
So you're right, so let's eliminate it, and then Stone Hill will never get built. I like your idea. Brian, let's get that on agenda. I mean...
Well, not necessarily. Then the, all the medical stuff at the other end of Oviedo on the park may not get built.
That's true.
There's a lot of stuff that, I think what would happen is a rush of projects to get in before this made it through council. But because a lot of people in this town are concerned about traffic, I thought we ought to at least have a discussion about it.
Doesn't look like we want.
Do you know the natural course of business in the city, the way things are going, and what's on the books? The hospital's done, Stone Hill will be done, Tom is almost done. There's not gonna be much going on anymore. So it's all naturally gonna take itself.
419 and 426 is being widened to correct this issue.
So you're gonna be...
That was the whole purpose of us having the transportation concurrency exception area, so that we could keep the development going while we had to wait 20 years for the state to widen their darn road, because of constraints put on it by councils 30 years ago, who stuck their head in the sand. You're right.
It's a big old mess, it is.
Things could be a thousand times better anywhere with hindsight, you know, and, and, we talk about this all the time. I talk about it at states of the cities of years past. I mean, if the councils would have been, would have built the bypasses around the city that the state told them to build. If the council would have built Mitchell Hammock Road through to 419 like it was originally designed, I, I can go on and on and on and on. I mean, behind Keith's house was supposed to be the Chapman Road extension over to Lockwood, right by my house through my neighborhood across the river. It's all on paper. Brian has them all, or I may have them all at Homestead.
I've got them all.
I gave him back?
Yeah.
I mean, read the, post, who's that, Post Buckley Johnson?
Post Buckley did the first one.
Right. Read that report from 1981, 82, 79?
Eighty-seven.
It's typewritten, the darn thing. I mean, it's actually a typewritten report. Typewriter. Things about that thick, with, with all the bypasses built in it.
Yes.
So, you know, it's, folks can complain about traffic all they want, and they'd have every right to complain about traffic if this body didn't have a plan to fix it. But we do. But what this body also did, and bodies in the past did, is that we kept our economy growing while we waited for the state to catch up. Because if we wouldn't have done it, everything would be outside of our borders, nothing would be inside of our borders, and...
We'd get all the impact.
And we'd get all the impact anyway. So it, it, it's much more complicated than just throwing that bomb out there.
I don't disagree, but I'm glad that we have it, and there's people here who can be sticking on Facebook and try to explain to people why this exists and why Mitchell Hammock is as bad as it is.
Well, you know, you know, you know how it could be explained to people on Facebook, and, and this is for everybody on this body? If you all would just tell them the reasons why, rather than just leaving it up to me. Okay?
We don't wanna violate sunshine, so I just steer, steer clear where you hang on Facebook.
Well, you see, that's, that's half the problem, is that, and, and, you know, Facebook, whatever, who cares? You know, half the time folks pay attention and they don't, but, and I realize it's a, it's a sunshine issue, I get that, but, you know, if everybody was out there telling everybody what the real reasons is, are, that have created this problem, then folks would understand it, you know, rather than just leaving it to me to do all the time. So if you, you really wanna know what the gist of the, the whole entire issue is, we can't have a body going around with, with four of us on one page and one of us on another. That, that's not gonna be healthy at work. But anyway, your report, finish.
That's it. And I'm on the same page as you guys on this one, I just think it was important for us to have a discussion, just like the one that happened from here.
But tell people why. Don't drop a bomb.
I do tell people why. I tell, I tell them what I think the consequence will be, which is screeching all development to a halt.
There is no doubt that this city, in a few years, when all these road projects get done, and everything is done, this place is already great, it's gonna be so good, you know, we're gonna be in the top five of everything, you know, and the, and the people out there that ask about traffic, you're right, we all, we all hate it, you know? He's 100 percent correct, all those things he did. You know, you gotta have some vision here, and we talk about that golf course, 'cause I know you're a little hung up on that golf course, but that golf course, we, we are at a moment in history, the five of us, and the five who were here before, with Cindy and Steve, that we bought that. Now, these people 30 years ago, I often say, "Why didn't they go from the 417 all the way down to Mitchell Hammock and widen that?" You know what a disaster that is to do now? It'll get done. They would've did it then, it would've been so much better.
But we can't do it now. Okay, let's talk about that. That's a great point.